Welcome to the September 12th, 2022 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Waddington followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for the meeting this evening, give us the guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Myers, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinter?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting, of our August 22nd, 2022 meeting. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Jow.
I move that we accept the minutes of the August 22nd meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name, your address, and your agenda comments. Now's the time. Seeing no one racing to the podium, we'll move to the next item on our agenda. It is our city's pleasure to deliver a proclamation this evening to Susan Weber Zire for continuous efforts to pass legislation for the benefit of so many veterans, specifically those people affected by the burn pit situation. I and many of us first met Ms. Zire about five years ago on, of all things, a neighborhood cleanup sponsored by Commissioner Waddington. And that may have been the beginning of that process. It has been five long years. And I think tonight you're going to find that this proclamation is certainly duly warranted for Ms. Zire. She becomes not a favorite son of this city, but a favorite daughter. I've asked Commissioner Waddington, who sponsored this proclamation, to deliver that proclamation by reading it into the record. Commissioner Waddington?
Thank you. Susan, if you're here. Okay. My mom, could you come up?
Oh. I do or here?
That's good. That's good. Okay. Whereas Susan Weber Zire was recently instrumental in passing into law the SFC Heath Robinson Honoring Our PAC Act bill that will provide over 3 million sick and dying veterans who have illnesses related to toxic burn pit exposures with benefits. Susan and her daughter Danielle Robinson and granddaughter Burley were present for the bill to be signed by the President Biden, August 10th, 2022. The bill was named after her late son-in-law, Danielle's late husband, and Burley's father, Heath. Their years of efforts and awareness and advocacy for the issue in Heath's memory exemplifies the devotion and tenacity of the dedication to our soldiers and veterans. Susan has remained at the forefront in this effort in the memory of her late son-in-law. Whereas Susan, along with hundreds of veterans and allies, made history by staging the longest sit-in protest ever on the steps and lawn of the United States Capitol, a total of six days. Whereas Susan volunteered as an Ohio Advocate for Burn Pits 360 Veterans Organization and Director of State Advocates for organization working tirelessly for the affected by the toxic burn exposures. Whereas Susan was born and raised in Sandusky and a 1975 Sandusky High School graduate. Whereas the first female skilled trades worker at New departure in 1978 and after scoring the highest ever in the history of the apprentice test. Whereas Susan has volunteered over 10 years to foster trained service dogs from the ACAD Ability Center Assistant Dogs in Toledo for people with disabilities. She takes dogs all over town for training and to Sandusky High School sporting events. Whereas Susan has been an active participant in the Sandusky Art Walk, making and selling, donating her property or pottery, and proceeds to the various nonprofit organization. Whereas today, our city recognizes you for passion that you have shown to stay the course, struggle to pass the PAC Act. There must have been dozens of times when you could have given up and turned around, and you didn't either. You pressed on. Your resolve will make life easier for thousands of veterans who have been exposed to toxins from the burn pits. Now, I therefore, I Dave Waddington, Commissioner of City of Sandusky, Ohio, do proclaim recognition to Susan Weber Zire for her accomplishments in Sandusky and Washington, D.C., and urge those of you who know to thank her for accomplishments in succession or future. Dating this 12th day, September 26th, or September 12th, 2022. And this is signed off by the Mayor Richard Brady. I'd like to go on. At the last meeting, I challenged folks, who could have done this? You know, doors closed on you, and you kept pounding. So I have total respect for it. Thank you.
Should I open it?
Take a while.
There you go.
I don't have the time, but I don't think you could.
That's okay. I don't care.
Or is yours?
Thank you.
A lot of people never recognize that, but I watched from afar. And what you did is just mind-blowing. As far as your tenacity, I would have gave up probably two years.
There were times.
Yeah.
And my moments.
So I do appreciate it.
Thank you. My burn pits activism began after Congresswoman Marcy Cepthers' veteran aide advised me to compartmentalize my anger, turn it into fight mode, and go out there and do something. So I did. Never was it my intention to get recognition for myself. It was always to shine a light on the fact that America was refusing to care for our war heroes who returned safely from the battlefields only to be left alone fighting the toxic war that followed them home. I would not have been successful if not for the support of so many here in Sandusky. And I have many to thank for their part in my journey, starting with my family and my, especially my husband, David. I couldn't have done this without his and their support. Early on, Commissioner Dennis Murray put me in contact with someone at Senator Sherrod Brown's office, who immediately got the ball rolling for me. So thank you. Many thanks to Sandusky High School teacher Lonnie Jensen, who enlisted the help of some of her students and gathered several hundred signatures on letters I was collecting to send to the chairman of the Senate Veterans Affairs Committee requesting a hearing on burn pits. That was back in 2017. Thank you to the members of the Center for Peace Through Understanding, for always having my back and providing a forum for me to speak on my efforts and urge others to take action. Thank you to my friends and even strangers who helped collect signatures for me and always made calls or sent messages to members of Congress whenever we needed votes for various bills. I appreciate and love you all. Together, we sent 1,700 letters to the chairman of the Senate Veterans Committee requesting a hearing. And nine months after he received those letters, that hearing was granted. Because of everyone's efforts, thousands of sick and dying war veterans are automatically eligible for VA healthcare, disability, and other benefits, starting August 10th, when the Sergeant First Class Heath Robinson Honoring Our PAC Act was signed into law by President Biden. I will admit, there were moments where I felt I was wasting my time, that the obstacles were too difficult to overcome. It was in those moments when I reminded myself of the Benjamin Franklin quote, "Justice will never be served unless those who are unaffected are as outraged as those who are." We needed more people to feel our outrage and despair. My burn pits three family taught me that if we cannot withstand the storm, we must become the storm. And that's what we did, including camping out on the Capitol steps for six days, withstanding 95-degree heat and several thunderstorms. We were determined to stay until the Senate passed the PAC Act, and it worked. Having today proclaimed as my day is an honor for me, of which I'm very proud. But please know that today is very bittersweet. As if not for the needless suffering and deaths of thousands of our brave men and women who willingly went off to war in America's name, this proclamation wouldn't exist. Therefore, I'd like to dedicate Susan Weber Zire Day to my late son-in-law Heath Robinson and every one of his brothers and sisters who lost their lives to or are still battling burn pit illnesses. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
If I may. Susan, you make us, you make me proud. Like you make all of us proud to be a Sanduskyan. Your championship is unrivaled. I've seen many advocates. I've seen many people pursuing legislation. I've never seen anyone do it with the effectiveness and the grace that you did it. It was an honest, an honorable cause, and you did it righteously, and you did it in the right way. Just, you're just an example to us all. So thank you. But I will warn my colleagues. Today is a joyous occasion. Bittersweet, I understand. But we're celebrating your accomplishments today. But if you see Zire at that podium again, do whatever she asks, not stand in her way. Thank you.
After something as memorable as this, I will grant you the dispensation to gather your friends and family and leave this meeting because you don't want to sit here for two more hours of legislation. So. Perfect. Perfect. Enjoy.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
By the way, I wanted to say one thing.
Yes, sir.
This is my husband.
We figured that out.
What she has taught me is that one person can make a difference.
She did. She did, and she does. Thank you. Thank you for sharing her with us. Next item on our agenda is going to be an update presentation of the Sandusky Bay Pathway and Landing project by Michelle Johnson of EDG. Michelle, the floor is yours. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
All right. So last time I was up here with an update, everything was perfect and lovely and moving forward. And I think not even two weeks later, our world went into a lockdown. So we're here to go over the, what we're calling the landing, which is the landing park and trail. I'm going to cover that first. And just kind of giving a general update, I'm going to stop after I kind of give what I think maybe we're all looking for and answer questions. And then I'll move on to the Sandusky Bay Pathway, which is west of Cedar Point Drive. And again, kind of give some of the updates that we have there. And then any questions? The way that these contracts were split up as it relates to detailed design, the purple that you're seeing up on the screen is Pipe Creek. And then everything east of Pipe Creek all the way to the Sandusky City limits are part of what we're calling the landing, which does include the portion of the Sandusky Bay Pathway within the area that you're seeing on the map. Everything west of there is what we're calling Sandusky Bay Pathway. There's no park per se associated with it, significant mileage of trail. That's what I'll cover secondly. So the good news is that very recently, we were notified that we received $7.59 million of raise money from the Biden administration, which, for better or for worse, which is obviously fantastic from a budget standpoint, we are now needing to divide up the landing project into two projects. So everything that you're seeing in purple and green on the screen is now part of the Raze program. While the alignment's staying the same, everything, you know, our detailed design is staying the same. Because of the federal funding, the timing is, is just needs to be split up. I'll go into that in a little bit. So really, we have two projects from the landing and Sandusky Pathway for the study area that you are seeing on the screen. We are in the process right now of dividing up that plan set into two. So we are working on that and coordinating with ODOT on that. So we have 7.59 million for the Raze grant. We also have 1.25 million for ODNR and state capital monies, basically for improvements along and in the old airport site. We are wrapping up our permitting. So that's the big thing right now that is from a detailed design standpoint. We have OEP A permit determination, which basically is roughly 180 days. And we're kind of at their mercy, but we did a lot of precoordination. So all of the organizations know that this is happening. They're in support of our project. We changed some things very early in the process to make sure that the Corps and ODNR were comfortable with what we're doing. We had many meetings with city staff, as well as the Corps and ODNR and various folks. So the permits are not a surprise. There's just a process that we have to go through. And these are the last ones that I'm covering. So the 401 water quality is roughly 180 days once we submit. We're hoping all of these will go faster since they're expecting them. But again, we're kind of at their mercy. Then our U.S. Army Corps permit, the 404, all of this is kind of like water and environmental related. The 404 is actually dependent on the 401. So we can't actually get that approved until the 401's approved. That's also roughly 180 days. Again, we are hoping that is a little bit fast-tracked. With that, we also have the ODNR Office of Coastal Management. That's kind of the big, I'm going to call that the kicker right now. We're seeing really slow turnaround times coming from that organization. And the big things that come from that are our shore structure permits, as well as our submerged land lease permits. So we are actively working, not only with our internal EDG team and all of the eco and environmental permitting folks, but with our sub coastal management engineers, KS. And we're just, we're trying to see what we can do, even though we had precoordination, to move that along faster than turnaround that we are seeing for other projects in this district. So unfortunately, I don't have, you know, kind of a days or a weeks or a month update on that. But we're actively moving and we're trying to get those wrapped up. So all of those are going to be associated with everything that you're seeing in the red, to the blue, to that light blue teal color, orange, and yellow. So that's kind of now what is our local project, being locally funded. Everything in purple and green is being permitted separately through ODOT. Again, that's kind of a separate project, even though we're doing detailed design. So acquisition is our number one focus. And we are very proud to say that for everything that you are seeing on the map, we have one parcel left. We are actively working with that property owner to get an easement. It's not, it's not a total acquisition. It's just an easement on an old sewer, an existing sewer easement. So that is our number one focus right now. In addition to the permit, is being able to say that we are 100% acquired for all of the landing in Sandusky Bay Pathway as you're seeing it on the screen. So regarding the Raze grant, that is something that we just wanted to bring up. D3 is, ODOT District 3 is not under contract yet with USDOT. So we don't know timing yet until we get that USDOT contract with District 3. We've had multiple phone calls already. We obviously put a lot of coordination into that application. The big thing that we're hearing, though, is that it's going to be pushed back, knowing that there's federal processes involved. We're actively working to try to get their timeline move closer to our timeline. We're not anticipating that they're going to be done at the same time. Most likely, your local portion, everything red and east, is going to be done first. We're trying our best as a city staff to kind of move with ODOT to get them a little bit more in line. But again, until we get that USDOT contract, District 3's hands are kind of tied. They're, they are not even allowed to make a schedule, basically. So with that, that's all I have for the landing. Are there any specific questions, either about the design, the permitting process, acquisition process?
Commissioners, comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
Couple. Thank you, Michelle, for being here. It's good to see you again. So understanding that we don't know when the federal government and the state are going to be able to coordinate their efforts, that might be a delay. What is your best sense of, once that starts, once they, once they give that contract, that process is likely to take? Is it two to four years? Or can you give us a rough idea?
They're telling us that it's going to be an accelerated timeframe compared to the money that was received for everything east of Sandusky. If we can get to environmental documents, I'm going to call it two to three years. If they end up combining the environmental documents, which is the path that it sounds like they are taking right now, so to speak, I'm going to call that two to five. So it, they're treating it as one project, even though there's two timelines. And because of that, they're, we're almost done. So we're so far ahead right now. And yet, everything east hasn't quite been planned yet. So if that all happens at the same time, there's a whole process. I mean, it's basically starting over that timeframe for all the permits because it's associating the purple and the green with everything east of you, which is dealing with new category three wetlands. It's dealing with just things that haven't been delineated yet. So it almost doubles it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may continue.
Does that answer your question?
It did. Thank you. And then I wanted to turn to everything red and east. If I understand you correctly, and I've heard something just now that I'm not sure I'm understanding you correctly. But if I understand you correctly, these are going to move on separate timelines. And what ODOT and federal government are doing is not going to impact what's going on in this local area.
Correct. So all of those permits that I was listing off that were like almost at the finish line, that is associated, those four things are associated with everything to the red and east for your local, local projects.
And again, just one question and then one comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may. What is your best sense of the timeframe for that? And we're not going to hold you to it, but are we talking about starting in 2023 and the completion in 2025, something like that?
We are very hopeful to bid and start construction kind of second, third quarter, probably third quarter of 2023. The good news with this is some of the permit and habitat and species protection is actually mandating a means and methods of winter construction, which escalates the timeframe. Because most of the time, we wouldn't think of a project like this happening in the wintertime. But we are actually being mandated on the old airport to do most of the work that's on land within the wetlands during the wintertime. So at most, we think it's going to be a two full year-round construction, which escalates your timeframe because of that winter work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My final comment, as this remains, I think the most exciting thing I've ever been involved in in government, to be able to carve out a new waterfront park and pathway on a 200-plus-year-old city is really remarkable. I just hats off to everyone involved. It's just extraordinary. And at some point, Mr. Klein or Mr. Webster or maybe Ms. Reader is the right person, I'm not quite sure, I'd just like to get an update in terms of what the different funding sources are, understanding that it's all fluid. Because we just got this wonderful grant from the federal government. So we are able to displace some of the funding that we would otherwise be using from local sources. And I think that's just wonderful. But I just wanted to get a, just want to get a sense of where staff is looking to fund this great developments. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman? I just wanted to ask, is there a deadline on that Raze grant money? Is there a time period when it has to be spent?
It's like nine or 15 years.
Really?
Yeah, they get, the.
That's generous.
It is. The old administrations were much more stringent on it, and those deadlines just weren't being accommodated. It's just, part of it's just federal process. Part of it is honestly, from what we dealt with in my prior life, the federal highway kind of goes in and out with being able to handle administratively. So sometimes it was just being able to get the paperwork off the ground to even start. And so we have seen, you know, we don't see terms of shovel ready anymore. That also went to the wayside. And then those, those construction timeframes. If you're more ready, it's obviously better. However, they are extending those timelines out to basically allow for significant projects to be built.
Well, that's good news.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
This is an exciting project. You may not have the answer, and this may just be an adjunct to what Mr. Murray just asked, and you could add it to that. We have 7.5 million in grants and a 1.2, I believe. And at some point, how much of that, how much of the project does it cover? Is that just a little bit of it? Or how much do we have to come out of pocket to make this work over the area that it's assigned to? Do you actually know?
Mr. Klein, you look like you know the answer.
Great.
A little bit. We're putting all those numbers together still. The 7.59 covers everything from the purple and green. That like, that's 100% federal funding. So all the money that we had before that was really allocated from the TIF on the Cleveland Road TIF in that area is going to be looking to cover that, plus portions of the pathway outside the city. Now that money can move forward. So it's allowing us to reallocate and redistribute the TIF dollars that were dedicated for the pathway and the landing, if that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense. Perhaps Uncle Joe's not such a bad guy, huh?
I can recall that when we, as a commission, first bought into this project, it was explained to me that it would, could be as much as a 10- or 15-year opportunity, even though the, it's going to take a while. And I understand that, that two to five years seems incredibly short to me right now. So I think we're all excited about this. And Mr. Klein, perhaps or either of you might answer, the Raze grant that we did get, my understanding is that that will cover the cost. And I think you've just said this, I just want to be clear, from Hemminger Ditch to the bridge across Pipe Creek. So we will land on Cedar Point Drive from Hemminger Ditch with that amount of money.
Yes, the intent is to connect to the existing pathway along Cedar Point Drive, on the east side of Cedar Point Drive, and get all the way just short of any environmental issues at Hemminger Ditch.
Great.
So we can keep the environmental separate and hopefully move that other phase faster.
Excellent. That's a, that's a, that's a nice chunk. Additional comments, Commissioners?
Just one comment.
Commissioner Poole?
Since this is being paid by someone other than the general fund, I'm on board now. Bike lane's a great idea.
You're here. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your presentation. And we look forward to hearing from you again.
Well, you're about to. So I'm going to move on to the Sandusky Way Pathway, which is everything west of Cedar Point Drive. So this one, I know this map isn't quite as pretty as the last one. We are in construction documents right now. So I know before, for those of you that have been around for a couple of years, the plans and the pretty images, that that was part of the master plan. So we are now in detailed design, obviously, permitting. Acquisition is still our number one focus, but we have a lot of sections of the trail that are either already built, currently under design by a different project or in process of being constructed. Make Street is a perfect example of that. So everything that you're seeing in a color up on the screen is something that is part of the environmental design group kind of remaining pieces, if you will. We knew going into this project that we already had, you know, kind of disjointed segments. And our job is to make sure that all of those are connected. So the big thing that was exciting is that since we last spoke, the area that you're seeing in Fuchsia along Water Street, which is the furthest, most north segment on your screen, we actually received additional dollars from the Erie Regional MPO. And so that is actually being moved forward with some extra grant dollars through an LPA process, which is Local Let through ODOT. So that was always going to be part of finishing the Sandusky Way Pathway. It just became a different style of project just because there are ODOT funds involved. So that piece is not local anymore. That's following an ODOT process. Currently, we are having very dynamic conversations. We're almost there on the west side in particular. We've been actively working with TOFS, US Sabaki, the Erie County Health Department, ECHO, which is a county organization, a health organization. And we have just a few more paperwork pieces that need to be signed. And then basically, we'll have everything from the end of Venice Road all the way through Lyons Park, all the way through Monroe Street. So that is our absolute number one focus, just like Landing is making sure that we are moving forward with that acquisition, working diligently with not, with those project partners. All of these property owners are working with us, which is incredibly important to mention. It's been an incredible process and project. And just the willingness of the community is, is, you know, something to be congratulated on by, you know, with this commission. That being said, we do have two at-grade railroad crossings that are existing that we need to. we need to deal with. We are actively coordinating with Norfolk Southern. We just had another NS coordination meeting last week, and we're all trying to figure out between what we want from a best practice of multimodal versus NS's rules, you know, what is the best, safest way that everyone can agree to. We're legally allowed to cross right now. Those at-grade crossings are there. They're on Edgewater and Monroe. So, anyone on a bike or on foot can kind of do what they want. We're trying to make this, knowing that we are encouraging people to cross at those crossings, to make them as absolutely safe as possible for the pathway. So, that is an ongoing piece. So, that's more on the design side. There's kind of a twofold happening with the railroad. Design is those at-grade crossings. Then we also have outright acquisition. We have one on Monroe by Benny Bayington's property. It's a diagonal, completely isolated, landlocked, abandoned railroad parcel. And then we also have one on First Street, again, landlocked, abandoned. That follows a different process with Norfolk Southern. So, we deal with right-of-way acquisition, because they realize that they're landlocked, and so that's actually getting into parcel acquisition versus design consideration happening at the at-grade crossing. So, design versus acquisition, we're doing them at the same time. Dealing with the railroad's always fun, and we're doing the best we can with the response time that we're getting, and we're moving along. That being said, we talked about Water Street. That is actually going to be starting construction in 2023, calendar year 2023. So, our goal right now, given the way that the funding has kind of, you know, played out since the pandemic, is that we're trying to get one major segment built every single year, if not more. So, Water Street, Meg's is going to be done this year. We have Water Street next year. We're, knock on wood, hoping that the west side, with everything locked and loaded with the right-of-way, you're going to see this moving pretty quickly in fairly large pieces. Other than that, does anyone have any questions?
Commissioners, comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just on the upgraded railroad crossings, at the minimum, could you, you won't have an answer now, but before it's done, would like to see them upgraded to the point that when the trains come through, they don't have to blow their horns. And if we choose not to do that, just some explanation of what's going on. Seems like if we're upgrading now, that this is the time to, with all we're going to have invested in it, it can't be much more.
Yeah.
And I recognize it's kind of a, enough said, just--
We are actively working with them, yes, trying to, getting an upgrade is definitely something that we are working towards. That's going to be a major piece for us.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
If not, do you have another section of your--
No, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
See you again. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. What is your pleasure?
Move to accept.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. An objection, the motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion's approved. Commissioners, we have 14 items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move consent, any of these consent agendas to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, liquor permit transfer for Sandusky Food and Wine. Item B, contract for transportation services with serving our seniors. Item C, vehicle lease agreement with serving our seniors. Item D, 2023 tax budget. Item E, 2022 appropriation amendment number four. Item F, submerged land lease payment for Sandusky Sailing Club. Item G, CDBG subrecipient agreement with Karen Share Program. Item H, CDBG subrecipient agreement with Father's Heart Food Pantry. Item I, CDBG subrecipient agreement with Father's Heart After School Program. Item J, approval for fire disposal of metal lockers. Item K, agreement with Stryker Sales for annual maintenance. Item L, 911 maintenance agreement payment. Item M, easement for Columbia Gas. Item N, approval for US DOT Safe Street and Roads Grant.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances, resolutions, and requests for liquor permit transfer, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Move for the adoption of these ordinances and resolutions and the single motion pursuant to Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the rule on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the ordinances, resolutions, and requests for liquor permit transfer.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Those ordinances, resolution, and liquor permit transfer are passed. I'll now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Myers, will you present item number one, please?
Item one. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Erie County Health Department for real property located at 3201 West Monroe Street and identified its parcel number 59-01180, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. I will be recusing myself from this vote as my company considers the Erie County Health Department to be a customer at this point in time. Discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meinter.
I know it's probably too late, but I know we were trying to move this bike path across the Health Department property, and they wanted us to move it to the south side of the property through the parking lot instead of the north side. Maybe we've got a little leverage here to go back and ask if we could move along the waterfront from the Health Department. Their excuse was they had to get big emergency equipment into the back, but I'm not so sure that's legitimate. But again, it may be too late.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, will you call the rule on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstain. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstain. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number two, please?
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed CDBG physical year 21 demolition project number four, directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinter.
I move for the adoption of this resolution and declare it take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
There can be no doubt that this 80-year-old sewer, or 80-year-old water pipe needs to be replaced, especially given the amount of work that we've had to complete on it and the amount of disruption that it's caused. Just a little curious, Mr. Klein, with prices rising so quickly, and I see the explanation in the communication in terms of why we didn't receive bids the first time, just some lack of clarity, deadlines, and some concerns that contractors had. But I'm curious to know, did the engineers estimate, I should have gone back when I couldn't find it, did the engineers' estimate change just given all the rising costs?
Through the President, yes, the estimates have changed. It's gone up around $1 million, and the, one of the things that this has done is it's actually caused us to look at the Warren Street project and make sure that we get these numbers first and then go out with Warren Street. That's why I know they were on the same timeline, and Commission was looking for those to be coming around September, October, but we're hoping to get these numbers so we don't have to go through that process on Warren two or three times as well. Fortunately, Warren is a little less time-sensitive as far as trying to get the seasonal variations and the seasonal traffic concerns addressed as part of the project as well. So, that one's about a month or two behind this one, because we're trying to get those numbers to be more accurate with the market as it is today.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you-- Mr. Meinter.
I might have fell asleep for a minute. Are we on two or three?
Yeah, I thought we were on two.
On two.
We're on two. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Murray was just excited.
I'm missing your point.
Where we talking, we went through the waterline project?
Yeah, the waterline project's the next.
The three.
The next.
Did I jump ahead?
Yeah.
I was excited.
All right, I feel better now. I thought I had a timer moment.
Somebody's asleep.
No, that was me.
Okay. One of us did.
Thanks for the young blood.
Is there any additional discussion on item number two? If not, Ms. Myers, will you call the rule on the motion for item number two?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number three?
It is requested a resolution be passed repealing Resolution Number 041-22R and declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Perkins Avenue Waterline and Reservicing Project, approving the revised specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Now we know it's $1 million more than it was last time. It hasn't gone up anymore, has it?
Mr. Chairman, I just got so bored with the conversation about the lease agreement, I just moved on to the next two.
It's hard to tell how far ahead of us you're going to get, I know that.
Move to adjourn.
Any discussion on item number three, Commissioners?
Ms. Myers, will you call the rule on that ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Excuse me, that resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number four, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mosier Construction Incorporated, Fremont, Ohio, for the Sandusky Justice Center project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner--
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wantington.
I was thrilled to see this come in at a lot lower originally. Indications or information I was getting is going to be 13, 14 million. I know we got around $1.5 million tied up in it right now, but 10-6 looks a heck of a lot better to me with the court doing 40%, so I'm more than happy with this. Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Hats off again to Mr. Klein for stewarding this process for so long. I mean, the site selection indicate here was five years ago. It seemed more like it was eight years ago. It's been a long process, and you've really done a great service to the city to be able to bring this in well below the engineers' estimate. I think it's going to be a great project, and it's one more of the several pieces that we had to get in place. When I rejoined the Commission now nine years ago, we're getting there. This is one of the last big pieces, so thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinter.
Just for the record, I read the, you know, the documents, and this covers just about everything except furniture, and we're going to try to use as much of the old furniture as we can, and we may have to come back and purchase some new furniture, but other than that, this should complete the project.
That's correct. Mr. Klein, perhaps you can share with them the value of, I believe there's an alternate in there for $150,000. You can share with them the intent of that.
Yes, Mr. President. We had three alternates. The third alternate was $150,000, $150,000, that'd be useless, $150,000 owner's allowance that will allow us to respond quickly. One of the big things that we want to make sure that we're addressing is the safety of the workers, not just the construction workers, but also the inspection team, but even the court and police staff, and making sure that they are safe while the project's going on. We know that there are environmental issues out there, so if something is encountered on the project, we can be able to move quickly and get that remediated and removed from the site. So, we did include that $150,000 contingency. That's that alternate number three. We are recommending that being included in the project as well. As for the furniture allowance, what we have, and Ms. Reader has a couple slides that she might be able to show, is we are reserving in that original budget that we had, $375,000, that we did an RFP process, selected O Supplies. Our office has been working hand-in-hand with them to make sure that everything that cannot be reused will be replaced with something that is affordable and in good condition as well. So, they will be supplying new, and that 375 is just an allocation for police and court to get additional furniture. That's not part of this contract. As we go through the design and go through the construction, but the design of the furniture in each office space, then that furniture will be selected. Obviously, we have a little more time, and we don't have to enter into that agreement now. So, that furniture will be in place and ready for everybody when it starts. now, so that furniture will be in place and ready for everybody when it starts. We will be coming back once that furniture is selected for another contract to run through City Commission to make sure that we do have that in place when the facility opens.
Commissioners, I have a question that I have been asked by both residents and by some of you, by my fellow commissioners, is how are we going to pay for this? And that's a question I think we've all asked ourselves on many pieces of legislation, but as important as this expenditure is, I've asked our finance director to provide us with a very brief summary of how we are going to pay for it and what exactly our debt situation is at this point in time to somewhat give us all a reassurance that we can afford this. So Ms. Reader, I know you have a brief presentation that you can share with us now.
It's just not on the screen. There we go. All right, so as we all saw, we were expecting engineer's estimate to come in for this project to be just over 13 million. We were elated to see the bids come in. We're awarding the bid tonight for $10,623,800. That's the little square on the right-hand side. The other item that Aaron was just speaking of is our furniture fixtures and equipment, max cost of $375,000 at the moment. So total for this rehab project right now, we're sitting at just under $11 million, $10,998,800. As you guys have already been aware, municipal court is going to fund 40 percent of that, so that leaves 60 percent for the city to fund. With the numbers we're looking at of nearly a million, or I'm sorry, $11 million, the municipal court is going to be responsible for about 4.4 million, and the city is going to be responsible for about $6.6 million of those costs. This kind of just shows, okay, if we're looking at doing this project for $11 million, we have $2 million in cash that we're going to use upfront to pay for this project. That leaves financing at $9 million. If we're financing $9 million, interest rate, assuming right now about a 4.3 percent interest rate for 25 years, that gets our estimated annual debt payment to be $595,000 annually. That would be broken down into the chart you see here. We're going to have $250,000 of safety funds. That is the new admissions tax and parking tax deal that we've worked out with Cedar Point and how we set aside money in different buckets. We're going to take $250,000 of those funds and set it aside for the Justice Center debt payment. We're going to have $135,000 coming annually from municipal court, and then we're also going to have the city's debt fund paying $210,000 annually for the Justice Center. This goes to the question of where we are at with our current debt structure and the debt payments and obligations that we have. This chart shows in 2014, we were sitting about $1.7 million annually we had in debt service payments. You can see, if you fast forward all the way to 2027, we have zero dollars committed in long-term debt that would be repaid from our general obligation out of our general bond retirement fund, which is great to think that, you know, in five years from now, we have zero due in long-term debt. We've come a long way over the years. If you look at right now in 2021, we have about $1.2 million in debt that we're paying off. In 2023 to 2024, you'll see a drastic drop. That's where we lose the library funding and some other funding, smaller funding sources are paid off in 2023. In 2026, we'll make our last final debt service payment for our fire station. So after that last payment in 2026, as we stand right now, before we issue any further debt, we have zero debt due in the year 2027, which is less than five years away. So we've come a long way and taken care of some of our long-term debt, and we're in a great position as we look for new projects going forward in the future. We plan to bring legislation to authorize the debt for the Justice Center at the next commission meeting on September 26.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Two questions. First, Ms. Reader, you may not be the appropriate person to ask this. I'm sorry? Oh, you may not be the appropriate person to ask this question. Maybe this is a Mr. Klein question, but the first question I have is, is this all-inclusive or are there some? I mean, normally when we do some new construction, this is essentially new construction. We have some security pieces. We have some telephones and other equipment that we're purchasing, and I don't have a problem with that. I just want, just inquiring as to whether this is all-inclusive or there's some other packages. And then the second question I have is, and I think you've partially already addressed this, will we be going out for permanent bond funding at the next meeting, or is there the option to stay in short-term notes during a period of this time? Because I think it's pretty widely anticipated that 16, 18 months from now, rates should be on a decline, and I'm just wondering if we might get more affordable project at that point in time or more affordable debt in that point in time.
Absolutely. Great questions. So through the Commission President to Commissioner Murray, I know Aaron has done a lot of the work as far as the IT-related items, and also Cody has helped with that. We had the radio tower there that needs to be moved as part of this project. That is all-inclusive. As far as we know, the numbers that you're seeing of just under $11 million should take care of everything that we need for the Justice Center. As far as the debt financing, we have finance committee this Friday, and that's one of our topics to discuss on best avenues moving forward with this project.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Bishop Poole.
Just a comment about what you have on the board here. As we move forward to 2027, you talk that it goes down to zero. Where does, when do we start paying for the Justice Center? That's not included in, that's not?
Correct. That is not inclusive yet.
So what other debt will we have that we, there'll be no other debt?
At this moment?
The new, yeah, I know about this moment, but '26, you're projecting zero. Someplace right after that, we're going to have to buy the city building, this building. So can you give some idea of projections of what else we're going to owe? So it's not going to just be, you've got to include what you just presented, which is a Justice Center, then the city building. What else are we borrowing money on? We have several notes out there right now that are eventually going to be combined into a bond. Where are we going to be when we do that? Is it not going to be zero?
Correct. At this moment, so we have various purpose notes, and those are just closed last week. That's where we came to the commission earlier, late August, I think it was, and we actually are paying down $3.1 million on our various purpose notes. At this point, I don't see the various purpose notes going into a long-term debt scenario. We'll continue to pay those down, that those won't be bonded out into anything additional besides just a one-year annual note. So those won't be affected, those won't be showing on here. We'll find funding sources to pay the various purpose notes off. As far as other projects, yes, we have the city hall building that we have the option to purchase. It's going to be just under $3 million, I think $2.9 million, and that's where our conversation is happening as far as capital projects and the funds and where we're devoting the funds to either, you know, look at putting money aside to make that purchase, or if we're going to be doing some long-term financing to purchase this building. So I don't have that answer today.
Okay, that's fine. And just a comment, as I look at 1.7 million in 2014, and since you didn't go back any further, I presume it was in those general vicinity's in the five or six years before. Just as we go forward, as we add projects, if you would give projections of what that number is going to be as we keep adding projects one at a time to whatever we're doing over the next six months to a year, a couple of years. And the reason I bring that up is because 2000, prior to 2014, and 2014 wasn't a very good time to be here. We were pretty much lacking in service and having some issues that we've corrected in the future, but I'd like just decent tally and keep track of how much we're raising, getting back up to that number where we're going to start laying people off and so forth. I'd like to talk about it in that perspective as opposed to just, it's going to be zero 2026, but we'll talk about all the others later. Thanks.
Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
If I may point out, Mr. Poole makes very good points about being able to keep this in context to make sure we continue to provide city services. The financial picture of the city of Sandusky today is vastly different than it was in 2014. We have far more revenues, we have far more reserves, far less debt. So it's important to keep that in mind so we don't make that mistake in the future. I don't think we're headed anywhere close to making an error. I think it's appropriate for a community like ours that is building something that's going to last for generations to ask the different generations to contribute to that, to the form of debt financing. So I think that's perfectly appropriate. And the other thing that I would point out is that if you haven't, if all the commission hasn't had an opportunity to see this, and I don't remember if it was shared with the commission, but I'm thinking, Ms. Reader, it was at the June meeting, maybe the May meeting of the finance committee. Periodically, maybe every 18 months or so, there is a financial expert who comes in and takes a look at how our debt situation compares to state limits in terms of what's permitted. We are so far below that. I mean, we are very, very healthy at the moment, and we do have the capacity to take on debt to complete these important projects. So just wanted to offer that. If you haven't had a chance to look at that, it would be illuminating, I would think. Thank you.
I find it incredible that a city with a $27 million budget can look forward to a year, year and a half from now, having a long-term debt obligation of around a quarter of a million dollars. I think that's a testament to being good stewards of these dollars, and my thanks to the fellow commissioners for allowing us to get to this point in time, because it is, we are in, as Mr. Murray stated, we're in an unbelievably good financial position right now. Allows us to do a lot of things for our residents that in past years and past decades we've not been able to do. Thank you, Ms. Reader. Concludes our regular general turn to our city manager for his report.
Thanks, Commissioner President.
We've got to vote on that, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we've got to vote on. Ms. Murray, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution is passed. That ordinance is passed. That does conclude our regular general.
Now for me.
City managers on deck?
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I too just want to commend Director Klein for your great work on getting that over the finish line with some support from Chief Horzak, and Director Reader, I can't say enough about how much discipline you've brought to the budgeting process to make sure that even as we invest more resources into the city, that we're doing so, being really financially sound and raising revenues while lowering debt and getting more done. And one thing I'd say to the point of Commissioner Brady's statement about the 27 million budget, I think we'll probably even end up being north of that, and that compares to about a $16 million general fund budget, I think, that we had in 2014, which over an eight-year period is pretty incredible to see over a 50% increase, and that's been demonstrated by a willingness of this commission to very strategically raise revenue, but also with a plan for how to invest those while lowering the debt. And so in addition to having more room to add projects that might use long-term financing, which was always part of the plan for the last several years, we're additionally putting a few million dollars a year into both housing and economic development funds that will drive investment into the city. And even before the partnership with Cedar Point last year, somewhere between $2 to $3 million in year-to-year capital investment into the city, that was not happening before the passage of issue eight. And then when you combine that with the Cedar Point partnership from last year, and while some of those are put into specific places, we're talking about additional few millions, so probably around $5 million of year-to-year capital investment into the city on the private side and the infrastructure side that wasn't happening, while we also have increased the people providing services to the city. It really is, I guess, a special time, I think, when you actually look back at the last eight years and see what the commission and the community and the staff who've worked really hard at that have accomplished, and I just hope that we don't get into a position where we take that progress for granted. With that being said, I'll start with the donations. First, the Sons of AMVets Post 17 recently held an All You Can Eat Perch Dinner event in support of the police department. They donated the proceeds from the event totaling 2,800. Thank you very much for the donation. We appreciate the support. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second. Second discussion. No objection. Motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks.
Next, a thank you to Ian and John Arnold of Docside Accommodations for a $100 donation to the greenhouse. I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection. That motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved for a thank you for that $100.
And the last donation is Sandusky Rack was the recipient of a donation of one pool table, two ping pong tables, and two football tables for use by youth and adults at the mill school facility. One of the ping pong tables was donated by Ryan Whaley. One of the foosball tables was donated by Audra Siler Rooker. The remaining pool table, ping pong table, and foosball table were donated through a Facebook birthday fundraiser and a discounted sale at Downing Billiards, compliments of Carolyn Naff. I'd ask for a motion to accept those generous donations.
So moved. Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection. That motion is approved. Hearing no objection, motion is approved. Our thanks.
Moving on to finance. The finance committee will meet on Friday, September 16th, at 8:00 a.m. in the commission chambers. Also, the city has applied for a grant to help purchase and place automated external defibrillators, or AEDs, at city facilities. We'd like to have a motion to approve this grant application as we applied for this grant through AEDgrant.com on an emergency basis to have AEDs installed as soon as possible. I'd ask for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Murray, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Meinter?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Moving on to public works. The Army Corps plans to begin dredging operations of the Mosley Channel the week of September 19th. It'll be a 24/7 operation as in years past. However, instead of open lake disposal, the dredgings will be pumped into the recently created wetlands for de-watering. Another project that Director Klein, and working very closely with Coastal Management and ODNR, have been putting into place at the Cedar Point Causeway. Also, an inspection that is completed every few years revealed that the 60-foot domed cover of the dye store unit at the wastewater treatment plant needs to be replaced. It's due to a small tear in the membrane. This unit, which stores gases generated from sludge digestion process, was originally installed as part of the Phase 2 plant expansion in 2010. I'd like to ask for a motion for the emergency replacement of this cover not to exceed $570,000. I know that's a significant investment, and Director Klein is prepared to answer any questions, should there be any, about this emergency repair request.
Can I have a motion?
General?
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, what can you tell us about that?
I first want to apologize that I'm coming through the manager's report on an emergency repair like this. I never liked doing that. I didn't get the actual not-to-exceed cost until about two hours before this meeting. Had a conversation with the vendor of this particular membrane, and they said that it is about a 90 to 120-day minimum delivery from when it is ordered. It's a piece of equipment that has to be specifically designed and constructed just for our system, our tank that we have there. What it is, it's a dual membrane system over top of one of our digesters. That digester collects the methane off gassing from the process, and it stores the outer membrane. During the inspection, they noticed a tear in that membrane. We don't know if it was from something that hit it, something that was thrown out. We have no idea what it was from. We do these inspections about every three to five years. Fortunately, it didn't damage the lower membrane. That one's still intact. If there is a problem with that one, then we could lose the membrane altogether. Could, one of the gentlemen on the phone call last week said it could dislodge from the tank because of the pressure built up inside and just blow off somewhere. We certainly don't want that to happen. So our goal is to move forward as quickly as possible with replacing this membrane. They do have about a 12- to 15-year-ish life expectancy, and we're right at the lower limit of that 12 years. So it is something that, as we have been trying to look at all of the equipment, all the processes, all the tanks and everything at our water and wastewater treatment plant, is something that we were looking to start getting more in detail about replacement over the next four or five years. Unfortunately, that timeline has been sped up to as quickly as we can possibly get it replaced.
Mr. Klein, we don't expect you to be able to anticipate tears in membranes. If we could do that, we'd ask you to pick lottery numbers for us, I guess, but, and it does not sound to me like we were at the logical end of the useful life. So anticipating this from a lot, end-of-life scenario, I don't think there's any remiss on your part either. So emergency repairs are emergency repairs.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Commissioner Murray.
Mr. Klein, please correct me if I'm wrong about this, but my recollection is that it's when that membrane was installed that we had a very significant reduction in odors floating off of the sewer treatment plant, and I think that has contributed significantly to the quality of life in the neighborhood around there. So this is a terribly important thing to replace. I don't know how many of us remember, probably we all do, remember what it was like out on the west end, the near west end by the sewer treatment plant. That was not a particularly desirable neighborhood at the time, and this has just made an enormous improvement. So, thank you.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but not only the recovery of the methane reduces the odors, but we utilize it for energy to run the generators, correct?
Yes, through the Commission President. We, I don't remember the exact number, but a very high percentage, almost 80, 90% of the methane gets turned into energy to fuel the plant and the pumps and those things. So it's dramatically reduced the electricity within the facility, the purchase of outside electricity that we've had to go through every year.
Mr. Chairman, there's one more question. Just curiosity, is there any hydrogen sulfide involved in these gases? That's heavier.
Through the Commission President, I'll have to get back to you on that one. I'm guessing that there is.
I just know that's a byproduct. And I know it's with the methane, but yeah.
I do know that in our sewer systems, that's a common problem with the concrete. So I'm guessing that it is, but I can't guarantee it. So I don't want to answer affirmatively.
Yeah, that's like, if you smell it, you're dead. That's, I just want to know.
Yeah. Ooh, if you smell it, you're dead. Additional comments, Commissioner? Ms. Myers, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That motion is passed.
Thank you. Moving on, the city advertised for design services for the Sheldon's Marsh Improvement Project. Per received no qualifications package, staff has continued to reach out to qualified engineering firms to get feedback. Also, Meg Street paving on the west side has begun, and work will flip to the east side the week of September 12th, or this week. Daily's parking lot has new light poles being installed by the city. We've had the concrete work awarded to Smith Paving, and work could begin as soon as this fall or as late as next spring. Following the concrete work, will be asphalt surfacing of the entire parking lot. As of this morning, all three splash pads have been shut down for the season. But I will say, as recently as the last day or two, I've seen them busy. So it was a good, well-used season for the splash pads. Also, fall cleanup will take place at Oakland Cemetery on October 3rd. All decorative items throughout the cemetery will be removed and disposed of regardless of their perceived value. Please remove anything you wish to keep prior to October 3rd. A single decorative item that meets regular guidelines will be permitted per space from October to mid-April. For questions, please contact the cemetery at 419-627-5842. And finally, residents are reminded there are two fall cleanup opportunities available. Citywide cleanup drop-off day has been scheduled for September 24th, and yard waste drop-off days are scheduled for October 8th, Saturday, October 8th and Sunday, October 9th. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments for the city manager? Not, we will move to items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioner? Items of new business. Any items of new business, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I would like to note at the next commission meeting, we will be recognizing community members who have been active in volunteering in the community. I think that'll be 4:00 p.m. over at the gazebo. And I would like to thank all of the commissioners, staff who participated in the walk on Third Street today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pajali. I have a little housekeeping here under new business. I will ask for a motion to set a public hearing for the September 26th commission meeting for the CDGB 2021 Comprehensive Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
Mr. Wantington.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Meinter.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes. That public hearing is set. Additional item of new business is really just a comment on, and perhaps a final thank you to the Lang Trust. I attended several of their concert series this summer, and all of them were, I think, were hugely successful.